For the Church Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January the 14th. And we will look down to the first item on our agenda and its recognition of a newly appointed Commissioner, Mr. Bryce.
We have a newly appointed Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Mr. Gordon Ray, who is back to serve again. He has served previously on the Board a few years back. And so what we'll do now is we'll administer his oath of office and then continue on the meeting. So, Mr. Ray, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye," and then state your name.
Aye, Gordon Ray.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Welcome on Board, again.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, item three, election of a Chairman and possible election of a Vice Chairman. All right, before we start into this, gentlemen, I have served as your Vice Chair, and if we wish to move that position around and put it in somebody else's lap, then I'm all for stepping down. So all I would ask is you just say, "We're gonna elect the Vice Chair," and let's do it. Because we have to elect a new Chairman, since David's departure as of the last meeting. All right.
Mr. Evans, sorry, down here, I apologize if I may. One thing to note is that Mr. Richmond also served on the TERS Board, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone.
Yes, sir.
And the idea at the time was to select the P&amp;Z Chair. Now, Council may not choose to follow that, they may go with somebody else or a different thing, but just wanted, before those nominations started and people said they'd agree to do it, that we may put them forward to serve on the TERS Board as well, if Council so desires.
Absolutely, and David also served us by attending Council meetings and reporting back on Council meetings, and a couple of others. TSAC and something else. I'm sorry, I've lost it. So, he also meets, for those of you unfamiliar, with City Staff each Monday, I think it's Monday, prior to our meeting, or is it Tuesday?
It's Wednesdays typically, but we, we're available, yes. The Chairman traditionally meets with staff at a regular time prior to the meeting to go over the agenda.
All right, so we'll leave it to y'all to figure out what time it's gonna be. All right. The first position then, that is vacant, well, no, let's deal with the Vice Chair first, because once we've done this, we need to move our seats around, and new people need to take over and run our meeting. All right, is there anybody sitting up here? We're missing Ken Greenwall. Ken Greenwall, I have spoken with, he does not wish to run for any of the offices that are open. So that takes Glenn, I mean Ken, out of the question. Now, anyone sitting up here who wants the Vice Chairman position? Any nominations? How about, let's do it that-a-way.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Evans to continue as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It's been moved by Christian that you continue me as your Vice Chairman, and, is that right?
Yes.
And seconded by Mr. Bro. Okay. I was hoping me ever heard you wrong. All right. We have that out there. Any questions, discussions, entertainment? None? All right, then you need to vote on that, gentlemen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, with the Aye abstained. All right. Now, for our Chairman, to lead us here on this diocese and in other factions of our work, do I hear any nominations for Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Evans, I would like to nominate Mr. Dolly as Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hmm?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. All right, we got, we got a motion to nominate Mr. Dolly Michael as our Chairman. Do we have a second on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second on this, to make Michael Dolly our Chairman. Any further discussion, questions? All right, if not, then let's call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, Mr. Dolly is now our Chairman. Y'all give us a few minutes to get exchanged around here. We still got the right sign in the right place? All right. I'm here. Okay. That's right, there's Ken's. Okay.
Hearing of residents, next item on our agenda. Do we have anybody sign up to speak? Nobody signed up to speak. Okay, the next item on the agenda then will be the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to discuss it? All right, Chair will entertain a motion for their consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we can, we approve consent agenda item PC 2017-027 as presented.
Any other discussion? All right, well, let's vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, next item on the agenda, public hearing, item 6A, KCC 2017-005. Hold a public hearing, consider and make a recommendation to City Council on a proposal to rezone approximately 12 acres of land, Autumn Winds Living and Rehabilitation from Apartment Multifamily Residential R4 to Plan Development District, PDD, located at 3301 FM 3009, Serts, Texas. Steph?
Good evening Commissioners. As Mr. Dolly said, the proposed rezone is approximately 12 acres, and from Apartment Multifamily Residential R4 to Plan Development District with a base zoning of Apartment Multifamily Residential R4 with a modification in order to allow for an assisted care living facility and an additional modification to buffering screening requirements against the adjacent residential. So just to get your bearings here, the property that we're looking at is here in green, we have Ashley Oak Drive here, and then FM 3009. Currently, the property does consist of the existing Autumn Winds Living and Rehabilitation Center, which is kind of in this general area, and then there's four acres that's also owned by the applicant that's undeveloped currently. So as stated, to the north, we have right-of-way for Ashley Oak Drive, to the south, we have Plan Development District, Single Family Residential, east right-of-way, 3009, and then to the west is also Plan Development District with that Single Family Residential, and R6. On June 2nd, 65 public caring notices were mailed to all property owners within 200 feet, that's signified by the red buffer here, once again, our subject property outlined in blue. Out of those responses, as of right now, I've received three responses in favor and two responses opposed. This is a zoomed-in image of the Future Land Use Plan, the map portion, and the green star signifies where the subject property is located. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan, through the Future Land Use Plan, designates the subject property as Single Family Residential, as you can see here. The objectives for Single Family Residential is for areas to be utilized as our traditional neighborhood design, and to also include a mix of residential uses, as well as limited commercial development to support the daily activities of the development. The proposed rezone is generally in conformance with those goals, specifically, the proposed rezone to PDD with that same base zoning of R4 provides the mix of residential uses that the Comprehensive Plan describes. The proposed rezoning should have a minimal impact on the public infrastructure, since the site is generally developed as-is. This is the actual zoning exhibit slide, so you can see the property that we're looking So this is the entire PDD language for this, the Autumn Winds Living and Rehabilitation PDD. The first portion is the general description of the site, and what Autumn Winds Living and Rehabilitation is looking to do. The portions that I want to focus on are two and three, which are the two modifications that they're requesting to the R4 zoning district. So the first one is that the permitted use table shall be modified to permit the assisted care or living facility land use in this PDD. So I want to explain why they're requesting that modification. That current zoning of R4 does not allow for assisted care or living facility, it's not permitted by our permitted use table, meaning Autumn Winds is currently illegal, non-conforming, meaning they can remain in existence, but they can't do any building expansions, those kind of things. In order for Autumn Winds to expand, they would have to go through this rezone process. Do you want to mention that currently, an assisted care or living facility is only allowed by right in the General Business and General Business Two zoning districts? And it is the opinion of Staff that rather than proposing a rezone to General Business with the adjacent residential, that this modified R4 with this land use seems a little more The next portion that I want to talk about is, shown on your screen, is this three, which is the modification to screening and fencing. So it states, "In the land use, if the land use, assisted care or living facility is being developed, the owner slash developer may provide a 50-foot wide landscape buffer and building setback along all property lines adjacent to Single Family Residential districts. Within this 50-foot wide landscape buffer, a planting ratio of no less than one shade tree every 20 linear feet and 15 shrubs every 50 linear feet will be provided. This extended buffer and additional planting is an alternative to constructing an eight-foot-high masonry wall as required by UDC Section 2198B3." So, the current requirement to develop on the site would include, as it states here, a minimum eight-foot-high masonry wall to separate the adjacent residential and then this land use. Additionally, there would be a required 20-foot-wide landscape buffer, and in that buffer, we would require a minimum of one shade tree every 30 linear feet and a minimum of 10 shrubs every 50 linear feet. So they're requesting to do an additional 30 feet of landscape buffer, and then plant additional trees and shrubs, making the requirement more strict than what the UDC currently has. They've requested this in order to protect numerous trees located along the property line, that way they can incorporate those trees in that 50-foot and not have to take them out to put the masonry wall. It is the opinion of Staff that the additional 30 feet of landscape buffer and the additional planning at this site will provide a comparable buffer to the UDC requirement. Based on the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Land Plan, the existing land use conditions, Plan Development District is an appropriate zoning district for the property, and Staff is making a recommendation of approval for the rezoning as submitted. And I do want to note that the applicants are here and want to give a brief presentation, so I'm gonna close mine down and get them up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. My name is Ryan Harrington, I am the President of Trinity Healthcare. We operate Autumn Winds Living and Rehabilitation, and I will promise to keep this short, but I want to provide you just some additional information about what our plans are and what we're doing. So, I believe that you've got the presentation on your screen, but we are planning on expanding the existing facility almost, but not quite doubling the size of the building. Right now, we're licensed for 96 beds as a skilled nursing facility, so we're a nursing home in the community, the building's been there for a very long time. So what we want to do is add 30 additional private units, we're gonna also add a therapy gym, that'll be brand-new, state-of-the-art. Additionally, we're gonna have more dining space, living space for all the residents that are in the building, provide some additional conference room space, parking, which is very important and needed, outdoor walking paths, outdoor living area. So this will be space that will be able to accommodate some additional residents, but will be a much better space for all of the residents that we have in the current facility. From a timing perspective, this will be about six months from about this time for us to finish out architectural plans, three to six months, and it's a nine-to-12-month construction process. So just kind of give you a general timeline of what we're looking at here. This is the existing facility, along with the plan that's drawn on it, Ashley Oaks is on the top of the drawing there, and to give you just a better idea, the lighter blue is the existing facility, and the dark blue shaded is the expansion. You'll see some of the drive that goes around the new construction there, that will be new drive, and one of the things that we'll do is add the 24 parking spaces, provide a second entrance, main entrance to the building, and also, very importantly, provide access all the way around the building, because right now, we don't have that. So that'll help with parking, it'll help with any emergency vehicles that need to access the property, and such, so that'll be a really nice addition. This is, in a little bit more granular detail, what the addition would look like, with a nice front entrance, additional offices, as I mentioned, a new therapy gym up front, resident rooms, new dining space, some outdoor dining space, and so again, this is just a little bit more granular detail on what we're, what we're planning to add. This is an exterior of the building, so right now, it's a brick building, pitched roof, it's a nice building, but it is an older facility. What we're gonna do is have an all-brick front of the facility, it will look and be everything you would expect of a brand-new building, it'll be very nice, but one of the things we're gonna try and do from a design perspective is make sure the design ties in with the existing facility, so it will look like it was always planned to be, you know, one building. It will be connected, so it'll be a corridor that will connect the new and the old portion of the building. So, at a just high level, one of the things I wanted to share with you also, Omega Healthcare Investors is the owner of the property. Trinity Healthcare, and I'm the President of Trinity Healthcare, we operate the property, and I lease the building from Omega. So at a very big picture, Omega is a public company, we've got representatives from Omega here, they are the largest owner of nursing homes in the country, they've got almost 1,000 properties, they're traded on the New York Stock Exchange, so they are a very big group, they've built a lot of facilities, done a lot of additions, a lot of new construction. I'm gonna show you some pictures in a second of what they've done in Texas. As an operator, Trinity Healthcare, I've got representatives here that are both, that work at the building, work with me on a daily basis, our architects are here as well. We operate over 20 facilities in Texas, that's what we do, we operate nursing homes in Texas. Serts is the third-largest market that we're in. So generally, we're in smaller towns, we are, in addition to being in Serts, we're in Sagin, Lulule, Gonzales, and some of the other communities in this region, but that's a little bit kind of at a very high level, who we are, very experienced from, from operating nursing home perspective, so we've been doing this for a long time, and we're very confident that the addition we're doing is gonna be better for the existing residents, and also being able to attract additional residents and add a few employees to the building. What I've provided also is some pictures, I'll go through them quickly, of other developments that Omega has built in Texas. These are not representative of exactly the style that we're gonna be doing, but just so you can have an idea of the quality of buildings that Omega built, I think that's important for you to visualize. This is one that was built in Eagle Lake, the same architect that we are using was the architect for this building as well. What you'll see here is some of the interior shots of the dining room, beauty salons, resident rooms, courtyard space. This is a building in Capel, Texas, again, some of the indoor space, Portica Share Drive, hallways, all very nice first-class buildings. This is a building that was in Round Rock, Texas, again, you'll see some resident rooms, a therapy gym, like, similar to what we'll have there, and again, a beauty shop there. Here's a facility in Mesquite, Texas, very nice landscaping outside, again, these are resident dining spaces, common area spaces, oh, and that's the last slide. So, gentlemen, thank you for your time, hopefully that answers questions, and we will obviously be available to answer anything whenever it's time to do that, if, so questions are made. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're gonna get to the public hearing. This is the opportunity for anybody here that has any comments, questions, or concern to come up and speak. When you do come up, please give your name and address for the record, the staff will record your questions, and once the public hearing is closed, then the staff and/or the applicant will be answering the questions. So, if anybody has anything you'd like to say about this, now's the time to come up And we open the hearing at 6:22.
Chris Domang, 2824 Berry Park. I'm in the area behind the area of the Autumn Winds. Like the plan, I think the zone tree area is good. I'm actually moving away, so take that for what it's worth, but I like what they're proposing. A concern, as you're looking at their proposal, is drainage. The water from that area does come down into what is Berry Creek, behind that property line. So when you're looking at the design and the engineering plans, please make sure that proper drainage diverts that water from the property behind it, because it has been a problem, especially my neighbor, 2820, at the end, where that water comes down, enters into the fence line, into the property, so just request that you keep that in mind in the planning.
My name is Tom Tidwell, I live at 2805 Ashley Oak, which is directly across from the vacant lot that's there now. One of my questions is, I realize that they're gonna add more parking, will that eliminate all the parking that's actually on Ashley Oak Drive up towards 3009? As it is now with that medical clinic up there, Kellum, and Autumn Winds employees parking in the street, it's very tough right now for more than one vehicle to get through that area without somebody giving the right-of-way and pulling off to the side while somebody comes by, I think it's a safety issue. Too many times, when you're coming off 3009, there's not a pull-out route to turn into that, you just have to stop as best you can, hope you don't get rear-ended going into that building, and that would be one thing I would, would mention. As far as the nursing home itself, I think that that plan is probably fine, I've not been in the older version, but my main concern is just parking on the streets.
Does anyone have anything else? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 6:25. All right, Commissioners, comments, questions?
Are they gonna explain? Are they gonna explain? Is Staff gonna answer the question?
Go ahead.
Let's Staff answer. First I might.
So, to your question about the drainage, so when the site does get, if the zoning gets approved, they would have to come in and do the full site plan, which includes a stormwater management plan, so that drainage will be reviewed and approved by the city engineer before they can start doing any clearing and grading or anything like that. Basically, before they can do the site work itself, the full drainage will be reviewed, that way they're not making an adverse impact to the adjacent property owners. As far as the parking on the street, it's definitely something we can review, and just like any other site, we do have the parking calculations, and whatever size building they're creating, that will be required to install so many additional parking spaces on-site, but I would say that we can definitely review and, and look at that street parking
And I think, if I can comment on the gentleman's comment about parking, I think a lot of it is coming from the Kellum Medical Facility, is where we generally see it. We have seen that, and I think we're gonna start taking a look at it. I know they've come to us about possible options for expanding parking lots, we're doing some off-site parking, we've been working with the property owner, I think they've purchased some property a little further down 3009 that they're looking at redeveloping as well, so there's probably some opportunity for us to capitalize on that project as well.
Bryce, maybe before folks go, the residents who have concern about that, we can get names and email addresses. The normal process on parking would be go to the Transportation Advisory, Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, and that would be something they would typically look at if it's not associated with the expansion, so maybe Bryce can get y'all's names and email addresses, Staff can start looking at it, we'll schedule it for a TSAC meeting, and we can notify you, so you can attend that meeting.
We, Bryce, we already addressed the addition of the new building that Kellum is building, and the parking situation was addressed several weeks ago. So, your comments were, we'll look into it, I would hope that we're looking into it right now. Kellum is, Kellum is building a new building, correct?
They don't, we have not received a site plan, so they have the plat that's in, and we heard a rezone a few months back, and, we, have we taken action on the replat? So we have a replat application in for their piece of property, but we haven't had any activity in a couple months on that piece of property.
Okay, so, so we mentioned we'll look into it, and we'll get TSAC to look into it. We've already brought this up before, I would expect the city to be looking into the situation now, not, "we're going to."
Certainly, Mr. Bro, I think, I think your point's well-taken, and perhaps there was some miscommunication that, when, as I understood it, when the issue was raised before, with the previous item, it was, there's a parking issue, make sure we keep that in mind when the site plan comes forward, because the ultimate solution on this is, Kellum Medical is part of their revised site plan, providing adequate parking to get people off the street. Because of the delays with that, and not knowing when they'll come forward, or if they'll come forward, and the fact that it was mentioned tonight, we probably need to take it to TSAC and start that effort right there, as opposed to dealing with it on the site plan, given that there's been that lag in the site plan development. So, I agree with you entirely, again, not knowing when they'll come forward with the site plan to expand, let's start tackling it with TSAC at this point. Again, we may find that the site plan starts moving, and that is ultimately the better solution, in my opinion, is.
Because when Kellum builds their new building, whenever that's gonna be, there'll be a new occupant in the current building. So it stands that, I would think that the parking problem will continue to exist. So whoever moves in there will likely have the same density, and we're still gonna have the parking problem, and so I, I think we need to work on it now, as opposed to later.
So I can appreciate that, again, what we would do is, when someone comes in, move in, either applies for a CO, or typically on a situation like that, they'll apply for a permit to renovate, at that point, we look to make sure there's adequate parking going forward. Again, part of what we do is when COs turn over, will, if that use changes or things like that, that's when we deal with the parking issue, and so we revisit that. We have a number of developers out there who are not happy with the city, when they were going to go into a new space, and we said, "Hold on, we've got a problem, there isn't adequate parking to let you go in," and that would typically be how we would handle that.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I, I notice our attorney isn't here tonight, but...
I notice our attorney isn't here tonight, but we, as much as I appreciate this discussion, I think we're straying off the topic a bit here.
I know Mr. Harrington had a comment about parking for their facility.
Yeah, just briefly, we, I appreciate the comment. Thank you very much. It is absolutely an issue. So we are adding 24 parking spaces right now. So literally this afternoon, we went out just for a snapshot, and there were 23 cars that were on the street today. We had 21 empty spots in our parking lot. Are some of those people on the street our employees or families? Sure. I don't know who's, who's who, but there is a good amount of parking here. We're adding 24 spots. Our residents don't have cars at the facility. Not that they can't, but they don't. We're going to be adding at any given time a maximum of nine employees, so there might be nine cars out of the 24 spots we're adding. So there will be some additional family members. But one of the things that's going to be really beneficial in this development is we're going to be adding the drive all the way around so that some of the back parking we have will be easier, easily accessible, and I think we'll have more people parking in our parking lot than on the street. So some of it is making sure that we have enough parking, and some of it's making sure we have access to that parking. And again, we've got a lot of parking spaces that aren't being used today that really could accommodate everybody on the street. Again, not all those are our employees. I'm sure that there's some of them are, but I just want to put all that just kind of in perspective for you as well.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yes. All right, in the application, I've got a statement that we're going to provide this 50-foot landscape buffer. However, in the piece that is written to represent the PDD statement, it says that I may provide a 50-foot landscape buffer. So to me, it's kind of one or the other. We are either going to put a 50-foot landscape buffer on the property, or we're not, or we need clarification if we're not, which in one of his pictures, I assume we're not, because I saw a parking lot that looked like it was adjacent to a street. So I think we need some clarification before we approve this, because there's a lot of difference between the words in this PDD piece that you're proposing and the application.
Okay, so maybe I can explain this a little better. So the way, if we all look at this document, the actual PDD document itself, so it says if the land use assisted care living facility is being developed, the owner slash developer may. So they can come in when they decide to, say the rezone is approved, they come in for their site plan, they might decide that they want to do the masonry wall. They have that option. This is essentially, if, if only this land use assisted care living facility comes in, they have the option to either do the masonry wall and the standard UDC requirements, or they have the option to do what the PDD says with that additional landscape buffer and additional landscaping. If another land use is being proposed there that's in conformance with the R4, they'd be required to do what is stated in the UDC itself, not what's in the PDD document. That's why it's that "may," because they have the option.
Well, if there's another land use coming in besides adding to this assisted living facility, then this document's worthless, and we don't need to be considering it, because this document, as far as I'm concerned, ties this land to an assisted living facility. There's no question that he's going to build it. He's not going to sell it, build something else, or let whoever buys it build something else, because we're saying by approving a PDD on a piece of land, that it's going to be what it's tailored to be.
So I can see your point, Mr. Evans, but I would like to just state that it is a PDD with the base zoning of R4 with the addition to that assisted care living facility. That means that they can still come in and develop it, anything that's already permitted in that R4 zoning district. So anything that can already go there right now would still be allowed to go in here just with the addition of that assisted care living facility.
And if I may kind of tag on to that, so as everyone knows, property does not always stay the same thing. We have seen buildings come and go over the years, you know, much, 100 years from now, when we are all dead and gone, this building may still be standing there, or it may be something different. However, what this provides is that opportunity, so that we're not necessarily zoning for a one-use user, which means that 50 years from now, because we've had properties that have been zoned the same thing since we picked up zoning back in the 60s, our original zoning ordinance for the city insurance, we have had properties that have been the same. We've also had properties that started as one thing and have changed to another. And so as planners, one of the things that we like to do is to make sure that we think very long-term, beyond the life of this building, or maybe there's future additions down the road as they continue to go through this, you know, kind of who knows as that property develops or the neighborhood redevelops, you know, we all see changes in structures over time. And so the way that this PDD is designed is to allow the existing zoning, which is that R4 base zoning, which has a number of uses, including, you know, parks and open space, school, municipal uses, a variety of other things. We have that allowance so that forever, without a rezone, it would not be that assisted care and living facility, because again, it's just generally not great practice to limit items to just solely one piece. Now, I recognize that this is written, and a lot of the statements in the introduction, which provides a summary of the existing content, describes the existing facility and the proposed for the expansion. But as we look at the bulk of the plan development, which is the modifications to the Unified Development Code or Current Unified Development Code, we see that there is changes to the R4 zoning district to add a land use, which we, which staff feels.
You're saying this 50-foot landscape buffer then only applies if they're going to build an assisted living facility.
Correct.
Otherwise, if they go in with multifamily, we're going to go back to the eight-foot masonry fence.
Exactly.
On record.
Because the, the masonry fence is a much, generally a much stricter standard and is more appropriate for a more intense use. The level of intensity of this use is compatible, as you can see, you know, it's been there for 30 years?
40.
Almost 40 years. And we've had, the surrounding neighborhoods have been developed after that facility even came in, so we know this is compatible in use. The other uses that are allowed potentially in R4, if the property was to redevelop sometime in the future, years down the road, when we're all dead and gone and ashes and dust, then that may not be the appropriate item anymore. It may need to revert to a more strict standard.
We can't, I'm sorry, we cannot open the meeting to the audience again.
You can address your question with staff at some point after the meeting. They'll be happy to answer you.
All I want to hear is that you're tying the PDD to a single development, not to the land. That's what you're telling me.
No, this is tied to the land. So zoning ties to the land, not a specific development.
Then that's not a true statement. Anybody who comes back after the PDD is passed can use that 50-foot buffer.
Anyone who has that specific land use can. So if somebody comes, if the, if the city comes in, purchases the property because there's a municipal facility that needs to be put there, or a small school, maybe, I guess it's far too small for a school, but hypothetical here, they would be required to follow that, the buffering and wall requirement, and do not have the option to do the 50-foot buffer with the increased landscaping, but must do the eight-foot wall as opposed.
I think I'm following you, Mr. Evans. So don't think of assisted care living facility as Autumn Winds. Think, think of assisted care living facility just as a land use. So it doesn't matter if Autumn Winds or Bryce Living decides to build there, they can use that requirement, as long as they fall into that land use of assisted care living facility per our Unified Development Code.
Commissioners, Mr. Outlaw?
One comment and, and one question. I'm sure emergency services will appreciate that circular drive. I, I know I've been up there more than once and try to back out of that dead-end driveway. Gets to be a pain. I did have a question about parking, but you answered that. Thank you very much. A question for staff, I, I see that this property is actually, it looks like it's three lots, and, but it looked like based on the proposed drawing that the new construction was going to remain on that one lot. So replat not required?
So we haven't quite gotten to the site design, looking at their drawings yet, but I think we would recommend doing, I'm not sure that any of the properties are actually platted, so it would all have to be platted together, or assuming if for some reason y'all wanted to do two lots, whatever have you, it would have to go through the full plating process for them to receive building permits.
All right, a question for you guys from me. You said you're going to build a new state-of-the-art therapy gym, and I know Silver Tree down the road also does outpatient services. Are you guys going to be providing outpatient services as well?
No, sir, we won't. We'll just be inpatient.
Do we have access to the other responses that came in?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to just read them or show them on the screen?
If they're not too long, you can read them or summarize them. Basically, why are they for, why are they against?
Yes, sir. So the first one, it's in favor, and it says the impact of rezoning will be minor to the area that grew up around it. The next one just has checked in favor. The next one says in favor, expect Autumn Winds to develop wisely with Berry Creek neighborhoods in mind. The next one we have is opposed to, and it states this is and was desired to be a single-family housing area. And then the next one states, I'm opposed to the request for ZC 2017-005 rezoning. With all of the cars from the doctor's office parking up and down on both sides of Ashley Oak Drive, we can barely drive down the street to get to our homes. A new development would only create more traffic.
Thank you. I have a question as well for, a general question on landscaping. Whether we go with the R4 or with the PDD, there's a pretty well-established tree canopy there, and I'm wondering, whatever we plant there, new trees, new shrubbery, is any of it going to grow? I have my doubts. And so from, from a city standpoint, you know, do we, do the, the trees and shrubs planted, do they have to grow? Because I doubt anything will grow underneath that canopy out there.
They do. Generally, the requirements that we have for required landscaping for trees are going to be in the buffers and along the street. Got a little bit for parking lots. Most of the time, they're able to have a landscape architect select species that are partial shade or full shade, if that's the case, that will grow. Our Parks Department does review for compatibility as well to ensure that we're not putting full-sun trees directly underneath a fully shaded canopy, and we work with the applicant as we go through that site plan process.
We shall see.
I remember a few years ago, we had a rezoning case with the 1103 storage, where that was also changed from GB to a PDD, and the reason we did that was to, not necessarily for the current use, but for possible potential future uses, try to limit what was going to go there to make sure it was compatible with what we're doing with the city and what we want to do with the city. And so I think the use of a PDD here is appropriate. Like Commissioner Evans, when I first read this, I was very concerned about the fact that at some point this property will redevelop and that it had the potential to redevelop into multifamily, and that they would have the ability to not meet the UDC requirements of having that masonry wall. But as you clarified, you know, that the land use, where the PDD document says, if the land use, quote, assisted care of living facility is being developed, then they can provide the buffer, and if it's not going to be that use, then they will be required to build that masonry wall. You know, that's one of the things that we've driven really hard to do over the years is to make sure that we have that separation of GB from residential, and this is a good way to allow Autumn Winds to do what they want to do, have a softer transition because of a lower-impact use than other traditional GB uses. So I think it's a good choice.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of ZC 2017-005, proposal to rezone approximately 12 acres of land from apartment multifamily residential R4 to Plan Development District. Recommend council approve that. And just a side comment, it was mentioned earlier, the, the single-family grew around this nursing home. I, I've been here 28 years now, and, and it was here before that, so. But I agree with you. I think by, by doing the PDD, we're, we're restricting what could potentially go in here in the future for the good.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a first from Mr. Outlaw, second from Mr. Columbeck. Any other discussion? Chair willing to entertain a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
All right, next item on the agenda, request by commissioners to place items on a future planning and zoning agenda. Commissioners, anybody have anything? Okay, for staff, I do have a couple of things. I guess the first one would involve city council. I know we've talked off and on for a couple of years about the situation with alternates and whether or not to have them. I think it's time that we have that discussion with council at some point and decide what we're going to do with that, because our original ordinance says we're going to have alternates, and we haven't had for several years, and we need to clarify that. And the other item that I have is that we also talked briefly a few months ago about the requirement to put up sign notifications for rezoning, and I think it's time we need to move forward on that as well. And then just one other comment. I don't know if we need to have this as an agenda item at our next meeting or not, but I will, over the next days or so, by the end of the week, I'm going to send in my resignation to the C-CAB committee, and we need to see about who on planning and zoning is going to step up and, and fill that position. Okay, announcements by commissioners. No announcements, okay. Announcements by city staff.
Okay, so Mr. Ray, since you're not familiar with this process, we like to bring in the new site plan applications that we've received. Although there is no discussion, it's by the commissioners. I just give a quick presentation of what it looks like, and then you just kind of get to see it. So the one for today is for Texas Plumbing Supply. It's Vestal Subdivision, Lot 7, Block 1. It's 17992 red iron. It's kind of hard to see on this exhibit, so here it is zoomed in. This is pipe stone and red iron, and they're looking at doing a 35,200-square-foot office warehouse mix, like I said, for the Texas Plumbing Supply.
Where is that?
It is, here's Walmart, this is really sad, here's Walmart, and it's further past Walmart in that area of town.
It's on three, if you go 3009, about where the railroad overbridges are, is its location.
The, the first bridge crosses over red iron.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Just trying to get there for you, Mr. Bro. I tried.
We got the general area, thank you.
Richard, are you familiar with the distribut, now, now I'm in a loss.
Tyce.
Tyce Distributing, right there on the corner, three, that's on, right on the corner of 3009 and Red Iron. No? Okay. Well, as somebody said, it's right as, that, that's the beginning of the first overpass over 300.
All right, with that being said, I think we've completed our agenda. Chair willing to entertain a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
So moved.